You're rolling.
Klein.
Here.
Keenick.
Here.
Poochel. Roder.
There.
Stagg.
Here.
Prove the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor? Close. Aries. Other comments? Even I don't say anything that's on the agenda.
No, I just, uh, my name's Ed Smith. I'm here from LRS to hear about the termination of the potential termination of the contract.
Okay. Alright, we got that down on the agenda.
Yeah. It's on the agenda.
Good. Then we'll move down with that. We've confirmed consent and agenda items.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
All closed? Okay. Uh, down to reports. The sheriff's not here. Engineer's not here.
They both submitted, um, written reports. There was a sheriff report, um, engineer submitted a written report. It's in the packet.
Counselor. Items? Staff or others?
On the council, I, I got a question for you. It's not really a report or anything. I've got a few, uh, people asking me last couple of weeks, what's gonna go on with, uh, the big huge stumps and trees down at the burn pile? How's that gonna get resolved?
I don't have a direct answer for you on it, but it is something I asked Justin about earlier today when I talked to him. He didn't know exactly how we're gonna handle that yet either.
And where did all those, are those, all the, all those, uh, trees and stumps and stuff, are them coming off of city property or are those citizens bringing them?
I don't have an answer for that. I'll find out. But I will. Anything, Shell?
Um, Justin, um, Justin not being here, I know that I'd asked him, he had let me know, and I asked him to give his report, um, on it, that he, he had let me know that, and I don't know if he let you know, that the time clock, um, broke. And they can't get it working anymore. So, um, and we can't return it. It's past the
Thirty days.
Date to return, so that last, didn't last very long. Awesome. Anyway, I just
So we should probably get on a future agenda to possibly replace.
Why would we need to get it on a future agenda? Do you just do, I mean?
Or, or is it something we could send in to get repaired?
Um.
How much was it?
I, I was like a hundred.
Oh, yeah. We'll just spend that and
Okay. Okay, that's good.
Okay, no problem. We'll do that.
But the sooner the better on that, shall we?
Okay.
Okay, down to item number seven. Gable Avenue Dust Control.
Uh. I haven't seen Mr. Gorman here, um, but he had stopped in, I don't know, Mike and Brian have anything to talk about on this, but he had stopped in here, um, and had a reference that he had just had his, well, not his street, the street, Gable Avenue. Um. Treated for dust and wanted, he had, uh, talked to one of the dump truck drivers with the project that we had going on and asked that they stay off of Gable, uh, when he, um, has the dust control applied. He wanted to be, uh, I'm sorry, before I knew that, he wanted to be on the council agenda. Um. And I, I really said, this is, we really don't need to be on an agenda for this. Um. But, you know, I would bring it up during the progress meeting, um, but like Adam, I think, had mentioned, it, it's really nothing that, I think, right? Nothing that we're gonna be able to control.
No, not a city street.
Yeah, so I don't know, it's just
It's currently maintained by the county.
He seems to think that, yeah, that we're gonna do something and he wanted to be on the agenda.
Couldn't we at least, uh, ask the engineers to ask them not to use it?
It was discussed during the progress meeting.
Did, did he get specific dates that he doesn't think that anybody should be on it?
You saw, I mean, I think I CC'd you guys on the email that I sent to the contractor.
It's a county road. You can't ask a contractor to change it because they, oh, they could have did something or something to not go on a public road.
Well, that, I agree with that too. You can't really say cease to assist on a certain section of the county.
I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, could you ask them not to use it?
They don't, and the project's almost done already.
And, and I, I, you know, I, again, I, I sent it to the engineers and the contractor and CC'd our council members that are, you know, and were kind of sitting in on meeting, so.
Yeah, um, you know, but I'm assuming when he did this anyway, it's probably past the time after he already had sprayed.
I don't know. He's not here to answer your question.
Well, it says, it says, it says on his agenda thing, it says he's got to do one more spray, but it doesn't say anything.
Right.
Yeah, I, I guess without knowing. But, but in reality, I agree with Adam. There's really nothing that you can do as far as contractor going down.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying we can't do anything. I'm just saying, just out of the scourge of the town, you can, I mean, of the council, you can just ask, see how much, I mean, if they say, no, we gotta use it, we gotta, there's nothing we can do, but I mean,
And it's information.
We can say we went the extra step.
Yeah, and we did. The information was passed on to the engineers and the contractor.
Okay. That's all we can do, bud.
Move on to number eight, see what it's wish you'd drive, see what you back up. Plan.
Yeah, just wanted, um, finally got correspondence from the city's insurance. Of, um, as it says, no fault of the city. And then, uh, the claim will be denied. Um, I did speak to Mr. Wilkinson, or, I'm sorry, Wilkins. When I got the letter, which was Thursday or Friday. Um. And he understood, you know, I'm just the messenger. Um, I thought he would be here tonight. I, I let him know that this would be on the agenda so the council could be updated on it as Daryl and I had talked to Swallow. Um. And so he, you know, very appreciative of communication. Um. I'm not sure.
Did the insurance company give a reason why they didn't buy it whole?
That the city's just not viable.
Wasn't at fault. From what they investigated, what was thoroughly investigated with it, they said the city had no reliability.
Who was the cause of it then? Do you know?
I remember, right? The water flow and everything when they ca- did the camera was flowing freely in the city's portion. And they had some blocking there stuck to the street.
It was from the main to the house somewhere there, you don't see it?
Yeah. There's something that got caught in the orange bird or whatever it was. And kept it going out. Where Justin has the video of everything that was done on that. Showing free flowing water.
In the main?
Hmm.
And was that before they, I plugged it?
Yeah.
So they, they did have a camera in the main while it was still, uh?
According to what Justin has explained, yes.
So from the main to the house somewhere, there's a plug in there.
That's what the insurance company said.
Yeah.
Or at least they're saying that it's not on our
Yeah.
line anyway.
Right.
Okay, number nine, resolution fifteen twenty twenty five. Approving payment number eight for, uh, Dave Schmidt.
I'm making motion.
Hang on, I gotta put a question. Um, I know on this project, it was like, this whole project was like three forty, like three point seven million, whatever, and we were budgeted for like four point two, right? Where are we at on the three, I mean, obviously we're over the three point seven with revisions and everything, but are we getting close at all to the? I mean, I always gotta follow, like, if we're budgeted for something, we just because we budgeted for four point two and it comes in at three point seven, it doesn't mean that we have to go up to four point, I mean, are we close to that four point two at all? Or are we at?
No, actually, the awarded
No, there's contingencies built into it and stuff. Where I think, you know, something that's been covered is
Yeah, it's on the, it's on this, uh, three, awarded project is three point five, three seven.
Three point five, yeah. Yeah, I, yeah, I was just saying, but I, I was
I, with the change orders that went to three point five, six, eight.
That's all we're at right now, but it will be a final adjustment because this is a project bid for quantity, obviously. And there are some items that they have gone, used more on, but there are some items that they used less on. So we get a credit back for some of those, but we, it all washes here when the final bill comes in.
So what's, what we're saying is we think we're gonna come in close to their original bid though.
Oh, yeah. I mean, the original was three seven, or three fives. Three fives. Eight, three, three five.
Three seven, right.
And we're at three five, six, eight right now.
So we're at thirty thousand.
I would not, I would bet we're gonna be three six probably. So, I mean,
I'm just saying, it's good practice for us is, I mean, just because we I mean, you don't wanna spend more money than what your original quote is, or, I mean, obviously, I, we've all been around, there's revisions with everything and everything, but we don't wanna get, you wouldn't wanna get to the end and all of a sudden, oh my God, we're at four point four, you know, or
Sure.
I, I mean, I'm just saying, it's just good practice to follow this.
That's why these payoffs always have that on the card.
Okay.
We have, we have
If you take a look at that.
Those Wednesday meetings that you've been having with the contractor and everything, and if something would come up to where there'd be a major expenditure or some, it would all, it would come into the council the very next meeting about what was going on and everything, so we'd have
I just wanna make sure that we're in a practice of always following through with it, you know, with all that work.
Yeah, we're, I mean, we're not even talking, what do we have, thirty grand?
Yeah.
Thirty grand in change orders on a three point five million dollar job.
Right.
That's
That's strange. I mean, that's
Well, I've been totally in expectation, so I mean, I'm not, I'm not knocking anything. I'm just saying, as us as councilmen, we that is part of our job is to watch the dollars, you know?
No, we're right there.
We've been keeping pretty good, good sense of balance and everything, so, you know, with that, uh, again, I I wanna move, make a motion that we approve this payment.
Second.
To Dave Schmidt.
Keenick.
Alright.
Roder.
Alright.
Stagg.
Alright.
Klein.
Alright. Resolution sixteen twenty twenty five. Approving payout number three. For centuries, so we're, so this will pipe until six thousand one hundred ninety nine dollars, three cents. Motion to approve resolution sixteen twenty twenty five.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Roder.
Alright.
Stagg.
Alright.
Klein.
Alright.
Keenick.
Alright. Uh, resolution seventeen twenty twenty five. Adopting the addition of the Iowa statewide urban design specifications. Cities, Swisher supplemental specifications.
Yeah, this is, um, the city engineer had said that we're kind of behind a little bit on this, so we needed to get it, get it, um,
This is
Updated, yeah.
Suits our standards right across them.
So what, so with this, I actually do, is there been updates that we have?
Yes.
Yeah.
It brought us up to the twenty twenty five edition.
Yep.
So.
Okay.
Motion to approve resolution.
Does it change anything?
Twenty twenty five.
Does it change anything of what the, what's the changes that's, that we need to update? Is it anything?
I don't know.
It would be within the SUDAS document.
It's
It's statewide.
Statewide, it would be for
House, outside additions.
And all.
Stagg.
Hi.
Klein.
Hi.
Keenick.
Hi.
Roder.
Hi. Okay, number twelve, City U C R F's proposal, annexation.
Yeah, so this annexation correspondence came in and, uh, unfortunately, you can see, we received it on the, on April seventeenth, and I accidentally put it into the P N Z folder and not the council folder. Um, not a big deal. This, um, property, I don't know if you took a look at it to see where it is. It's actually outside of the moratorium area, so it's just correspondence for the city to be aware.
Right, it's not something
Nothing that we can do. I just want this council and the city to
Just the one right house right across from Kirakos.
Yeah.
No.
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 From Mario Brass, Mario Brass, I think.
Yeah.
Oh, from, oh, yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
So nothing that the council needs to take action on.
Yeah.
Thing that's interesting is the non-consenting parcels. Those are actually gonna be included in it, I mean.
Yes.
So, so what are they doing? They're moving this into a difference?
They're bringing it into the city of Cedar Rapids, city limits. So no, no action needed.
Yes, yes, and that fly out.
Yep.
Number thirteen. Yeah. Purchase one new copier for City Hall.
Yeah, I just wanted, I know that I, I kept saying, we don't need a new copier, we don't need a new copier. Um, but then all of a sudden, I realized and was made aware by access systems that this copier is going on six, seven years old, and I don't know if you remember, oh, it might have been almost a year ago now that the motherboard went out. And so I was made aware by access systems that um, they'll not be able to service this anymore. So they're taking us off of our service agreement. And that kinda, the bulb went off in my head. I'm thinking, oh, 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 Lord. As we start to bill on paper in the next month or two, if anything happens, I'm in a pickle because I don't have a copy machine, a big machine to print bills on. So, and we do have money budgeted yet. We, um, did not use but maybe a thousand dollars worth of I T services to get us kind of in better compliance on our, our, um, city computer. Uh, so there is money still budgeted in fiscal year twenty five to purchase the new copier.
There's a note.
Yes, yes, uh-huh. And that's what this
Agreement for maintenance.
Well, that's a monthly, quarterly fee, yeah.
Very motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Just all in favor, yeah.
All in favor? Alright. Close.
Thank you.
Okay, fourteen. Fourteen, termination letter for LRS.
Yeah, uh, um, just, I wanna just update the council. So this was sent to the city attorney, uh, for review with ma- the mayor. You had asked for some specifics to be put in there. And the city attorney struck those, saying those weren't needed to be in, so, but, but if you wanted them in, that is completely your decision, he said.
I did, it was
So, um, yeah, the, the uh, red line, blue lined draft of the letter is what, uh, the city attorney proposed, so.
So we're scratching all the blue line?
Correct, yeah. So, uh, are you, what, I approve, I'd appreciate a motion to uh, approve the letter, send it out, if that's what the council wants, wishes to do, because we're in the midst of preparing a new contract.
Make a motion that we approve.
Go ahead. Just remember, our gentleman is here to speak.
Sorry.
There you go.
Discussion.
Discussion.
No, I just, uh, I'm new to LRS about a month ago. Uh, former Kylie of mine called me and asked me if I would come up here and help him. So there were some opportunities, um, so I came to introduce myself last week and just found out about this potential list. So, uh, I'm not sure of the issues and what's been going on.
Well, um, Kurt, you can probably explain it better. You and Cody worked once.
Right, there was, uh, about a year and a half, two years ago, when LRS bought out, uh, what was it called? Johnson County Refuge or whatever. It, the service to Swisher has dropped terribly. We had, you, you're probably the third or fourth different person that's came in to talk to us.
I understand that.
About, and the first time they came, we, we were all hot and bothered here in the city. I mean, this, this should not be one of our hot button issues with citizens is
No, absolutely.
Recycling pickup. That's a, that's a standard. They pay a certain amount. They shouldn't have any worries about it. They came in the first time, they promised that, you know, they gave us the old song and dance, oh, you know, we got new turnover. I just took over this territory. It's gonna be better. We're not gonna have any problems. We all like, okay, we're glad that you came, came in and talked to us. We all gave you guys the grace that you know, you guys have got a learning curve or whatever. It's got, it, it's actually gotten worse since then. And I think we've had another person come in, and now he was the new manager of his territory, and he was gonna take control over it and all this stuff, and we've got, we've got, we've had weeks in a row, we've had like, it seems like one, one street a week at least gets either missed from garbage or recycling, or
Or yard waste.
Or bull, or, or whatever. I mean, it all started like, last year about this time, when we were supposed to have our citywide cleanup. We've got cars lined up for two blocks to dump stuff off, and you guys didn't show up. That's what started the whole wheels turning with everybody being upset about the town, about the thing. And you guys, to be totally honest with you guys, you guys came in as our low bid of these seven. And we still didn't vote to grant it because, I mean, Adam, Daryl, me, Mike, we should not have to sit around and listen to when we're walking down the street or about people bitching about the recycling and, uh, garbage pickups. It's, I mean, that's I mean, every, I know every company's gonna say they're not gonna have any, they're, they're gonna do better, they're gonna do better, they're gonna do better. We gave you guys the chance to do better. We gave you guys the chance for over a year to do better, and it didn't happen. So that's where we're at as a, as a council and as a town, I think, is, am I saying this right, guys?
Yeah.
I mean, that's, I mean, I, I hate, I, I mean, I hate to say pull the plug on you guys, but it's not like we didn't give you guys chances. I mean, we, we had you guys in here, we talked to you, you guys promised us this, promised us that. And right, right now, we're at the point where we don't believe that you guys are gonna give us good service. That's why I don't think a single person here voted to grant it to you guys. I mean, and, and we might get it with the, the new one. We don't know. We're getting, we're getting into a new territory too. We might not get a good service too. I mean, you know, it's all blue sky, you know?
If.
Problems until you get it, right? But we gotta take a chance now because we're not gonna sit around here and listen to having complaints about our garbage pickup and our recycling. We gotta, we gotta hear enough complaints around town without having to worry about.
There's no doubt, obviously, being a small town, it's
Exactly, right. I mean, we got three hundred and ninety houses or households that you guys, I mean, it's not that big of a town, so it's like, we shouldn't have problems every week. It's not like we got new additions, new houses going up or somewhere.
Yeah.
And
I will say, since the regional manager, manager came in with the last guy or the previous guy, we have gotten better. But that's only the last weeks or so.
It's been
And it's still not perfect, but it's better.
There's still been spots to where they've missed things.
And better, it's not perfect.
I've even had to call in and ask them to come get stuff.
Maybe you can get through.
See, that's, that's the other
It was another thing.
That's the other complaint we got. Like, we call down there, I mean, at least with like, who we're going with or who we would, could, could have went with, at least we're gonna be talking to somebody that's right within this vicinity. We can call in there and not get any response, and then all of a sudden, the call's coming from Illinois or whatever, you know? Well, they don't know what Swisher, I mean
Yeah, that's, obviously, that's the home
Home base.
Home base, yeah, right. Um, I know last week, when I was in, I provided my direct contacts. I know the township also has one for my supervisor, for my dispatcher. So if you can't get in through the customer service line, there is direct contacts that can be reached. Yeah. For any issues.
Yeah, we have those now, but we didn't have
Right. And like, our citizens
Well, they change over every three months.
Yeah. And our citizens having to call in, I mean, they're not gonna wanna have five different numbers to have to call to get ahold of somebody. They want one number to call, and you know, either the receptionist is gonna answer the phone, or the dispatcher, or somebody is gonna get into that driver. I mean, like, if, say, like, Adam had to call in and all of a sudden, well, that's not the right number, call this number, or call this number, or call this number. That's not a, that's not a good system.
Yeah, so normally, when I deal with the townships where I came from, it would be, the residents would call the township, so it sounds more like they call directly to LRS? The residents
A lot of them do, yeah.
Well, Shelley will call, Shelley has called multiple times, but she gets I had a dishwasher sit in my driveway for four days with tags on it, and I watched them look at the tags and then say and they, two trucks just left, and I'm like, okay, four days. I had to call in to have them come get it.
Yeah, and that's, obviously, that's not any good. Uh, our trucks are automated, so there's certain things they can and can't pick up, which is most of its parts. We have to send a, a rearload truck or one of our pickup trucks to grab, something like that.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Do you have documentation on the misses or anything?
We have to go through our back old meetings when people were complaining about it.
I mean, recently with the eight weeks, where it has gotten better, but the last eight weeks, it's been on the decline.
Other than Mike having to call, uh?
I've had to call a couple of times, and a lot of it had to do with either uh, I think it was missed recycle. Or it had to do with miss yard waste pickup. And I'm thinking this happened like a couple of weeks ago. Looked, looked down my street after they, after you guys were here and left on the day to pick everything up. And there's bags down the streets that now in front of people's residences with yard waste. It's just left there in the street.
And, and one, one other complaint that we had too was, it was like, um, there was never like a set schedule, like, like one week, Mike's garbage might get picked up at eight o'clock in the morning. The next week, it might get picked up at four o'clock in the afternoon. You know, when you got older people to bring out their garbage and things, then all of a sudden, I walk back out there, they say, oh, they must have missed me, and they bring it back in at one o'clock in the afternoon. Then all of a sudden, you guys go by at four o'clock, and leave, when, before LRS bought it out, when it was Johnson County Refuge, it was almost, I could almost set my watch by every, what time they were gonna be by my house. I know you, they can't do that every week and everything, but I mean, it's so sporadic of when stuff's getting picked up.
Yeah, I mean, that's the
You guys agree with, I mean,
Mm-hmm.
Because sometimes it gets picked up in the morning, sometimes it's in the afternoon, sometimes it's, shoot, we've had, I, I've seen the LRS trucks going around at five o'clock in the evening sometimes.
Or six.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know you guys are gonna say, well, we probably had truck troubles or something that day, but that's part of the business though, too. I mean, everybody then
It is, and then when we have to, you know, obviously pull in help, it just depends when everybody else has done the routes or what happened to that truck, then, you know, we, we get everybody to come in here and lend a hand and make sure that we get cleaned up and that kinda stuff. So, um, yeah, unfortunately, I'm, you know, I feel bad that it got to this point.
Yeah.
Obviously, I was brought up here for certain opportunities like this.
Mm-hmm. Um. We didn't want it to get to this point either. We did, we, I mean, we brought you guys in and gave you guys, I mean, I, I think with that, after that first meeting, we were all pretty happy with what they had told us and
Right.
Everything else, and we thought it was gonna get better. And it didn't. I mean, so
Yeah, 'cause I don't know if anybody spoke to you before. Um, so on all our trucks too, we have a third ice system that we, that we use. So we can actually pull video if people say they were missed. And we can go, why did we do that to you?
No, I just would love to see all of those videos combined of them just driving back to his house. I got missed like three weeks in a row, and I came in and complained, so I just love
No, I'm just saying, so we do have that, you know what I mean? When somebody calls in and say, we can, especially when it's a repeat offense. Because then there, there may be an issue with the driver, or is do we have to help the customer? You know what I mean? Understand what we do, and that kinda stuff, so.
It was ultimately after the last time you guys were in here and we talked. That was a Monday night. That Wednesday forty how many do we have up there between torture and
Maybe forty-five. Yeah, forty-two, forty-five.
Forty-five houses, not one garbage, not one recycling, missed the entire loop.
Mm-hmm.
And it was two days earlier. They sat here and said, yep, yep, we're fixing it, everything else, and we had to call in. I'm like, you gotta be kidding. That would have been about February's meeting.
So we feel bad, but we, we don't feel that bad, is what I'm trying to say.
No, I understand, I understand. You know what I mean? I just came in to see
Yeah.
what the complaints are.
Yeah.
Right.
You know, but at this point, obviously, there's, I don't think there's anything I'm gonna do to change your minds. Um, but, you know, I said I would attend. Obviously, it's part of my job.
Yeah, and it's gonna help you with your other communities. I mean, if you're gonna make sure you're not having the same problems with other communities, then they're gonna do the same thing. I would imagine. Yeah, and it's gonna help you with your other communities, I mean, if you're gonna make sure you're not having the same problems with other communities, then they're gonna do the same thing, I would imagine.
I would hope not, but there is always that potential, unfortunately.
Own favor.
All right.
Okay.
Those. Yeah, move on to the next. Uh, fifteen is the mayor's term. Um, uh, we've talked about rotating it to.
Yeah, so I put that in your, um, packet. That of how terms are laid right now, and I know, um, Mike has had a conversation with me.
Yes.
Um, so having four seats, you know, mayor plus three council members at one time. Um, possibly all turning over.
At, at one time, and I don't know how long, how far back this was. I believe the mayor and two council seats were up at the same time for four-year terms. Somehow that got changed around where now the mayor and three council seats.
It's, it's because when, it's because when Brian took over, and it was, the, the paperwork was. To take, take over the thing until the next, you know, election.
Well.
Whenever someone is appointed, that's always gonna happen.
That's always, that's always gonna happen.
Why we would, why, what, what?
But this, this is what the deal is, is because of what's happening now, is if the mayor's term comes up. When three other council seats are up, you're basically doing an imbalance to the council. Whereas if the mayor was up with two seats. It goes to three and three.
Yeah, but isn't that gonna happen if somebody resigns?
No, 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 because when someone is appointed, if, and, and I'm only gonna use you as an example, cause you brought it up, Daryl. If, if you resign for whatever reason and somebody's appointed to your seat, they are not fulfilling your term. They will have to be on of the next upcoming ballot, Adam, just happened to you too, right? When you were appointed, you were midterm, regardless of the term, you have to be elected at the next election, doesn't matter.
Right.
And then if you're elected, you do fill, fulfill the rest of that.
Right, and it's the same thing with, with Brian.
Yeah, Brian's, Brian being appointed has nothing to do with it.
He would, he would have to be on the ballot this November if he wants to maintain the mayor's position and get voted in.
And then his term still would end on.
But his term, right, would still end in twenty twenty.
Seven.
Seven.
Yeah, well, well, I, I guess I just don't see the big problem, is, is you guys saying there, there's a possibility of four new. Members a- at the same time, well, it is what it is, I mean.
Well, and the way it sits now, yes, I think history wise, I don't believe it was like that originally. I think it was like three and three.
It, it might have been, but that's, that was caused by somebody resigning.
Well, it, no, somehow.
No, it doesn't, that, that designation doesn't, that, that doesn't matter.
Somehow it got shifted to where there was a two and a four.
How would it have gotten, it, it did shift it because Julie's mayor thing would not be up until the next, till twenty twenty seven, if she would have stayed on.
I don't know.
Now that she, now that we appointed somebody, it's.
No, Julie.
Julie was appointed.
Julie was also appointed.
Julie was not elected.
She wasn't elected.
Nobody ran, well, did nobody run for mayor when Chris?
Nobody ran for mayor.
You were written in but declined.
I think, yeah, it turned it down.
Yeah, and someone else turned it down, so.
And when, right, and when the.
Also, it's been for a year.
When the, the people that were write-ins declined, then basically the seat was gonna sit vacant. Until, until, until we either had a special election or there was an appointment. So the council at that time decided to do an appointment, because we just went through an election where we didn't have anybody on the ballot for mayor.
So how do you want to stagger them out? One, 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 uh.
I think it's just the way it is now with these current council members, if you're looking at that, they would stay what they are. It's just instead of the mayor. Being on the ballot for only a two-year term, he would care, or he would still carry out to twenty twenty.
The mayor would not.
Yeah, well, the, the, I, I'm, I'm not for this and I'll tell you why I'm not for this. Because a year ago when nobody would run for the election and nobody wanted to get appointed except for Brian. Say that was, and, 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 and we told them in the, in the thing that it was just to fill out, uh, till the next election, it was just. Basically, when Brian took it over, Brian knew it was for sure, just until January.
Till this November of this year.
Yeah, whatever, yeah, right, well, okay, so now I'm, I'm afraid you're gonna get into the fact, and it, it, there's ninety-nine percent chance it probably will not happen. But you could have somebody, well, they weren't, they didn't wanna take it then, but they wanna take it now, they wanna run now, you know, where. A year ago, they didn't want to and they, and they, they wanted to think about it for a year.
If there's somebody that would wanna get their name on the ballot in November, they can do that. I mean, it, it doesn't limit it to Brian running, I mean, if you wanna run for mayor.
Yeah, I'm saying, I'm saying, we, I don't, so why are we changing anything, it, it is what it is.
It's not really changing who's on the council and the mayorship right now, it's just changing when that position would come up. In the cycle for elections. I don't, and, and the reasoning of it is, it would balance out. How it's, how your elections run, where you'd either have three council members. On one election and then the next election would be two council members and the mayor.
Which is smart, cause if you do have a turnover of three council member, members plus the mayor all at once. And they've never been in city government or anything else, that's a lot of.
Problems.
That's a lot of trying to play catch up per se with four new people versus three.
Right.
Can, can you set that, somehow they have one every year?
One what?
One, one, uh, on, you're gonna let it every year, don't we?
No.
No, every two years are, are city elections.
Every two years, cause right, right now.
Somebody would wanna put on the, the.
You just have three and three, what it would be is to change basically the mayor to be where Cody and I's seat is. Instead of being the term for you and Stagg and Kurt, it would just move the mayor's. Term in their election time up to this coming year, that's all it would do, and you could run it as a four-year, cause it, instead of a two, let's run it as a four-year. Just like the council seat, instead of a two-year.
Right.
And, and I wonder, I wonder if at some point in the past, the mayor was on a two-year term, because some cities are, mayors are.
It's possible.
Just let me, let, hear me out, so at that time, if the mayor was on a two-year and, and I don't know if any of you remember that. Um, and, and the council decided, oh, you know, a mayor being on a two-year term is ridiculous, we need to have a mayor on a four-year term. Maybe it was extended, but extended with the wrong rotation.
Go to that.
I, I don't think, I don't think that is what happened, I think it's, we've had, um, two people in the last, uh. Well, that I can remember that didn't fill out their term as mayor, that probably screwed it up.
Are you talking Julian?
That had.
Julian, then.
No, that has nothing to do with it, nothing at all, to do with that.
Cause when, when Chris Taylor was mayor.
He was just done, his term had ended.
He, he decided he wasn't gonna run again, it was at the end of his term. But at the whole time that Chris was in office as mayor. This, this is the way the elections went, there was always either two council members and the mayor. Or, excuse me, just two council members, or there was three council members, or two couns-.
Three.
And the mayor, three, three and the mayor, that's right. So it was, so it wasn't balanced.
Yeah, so I had, I had, um, contacted the city attorney, cause I don't, I don't know. I mean, he, he said, well, we'll just change the code of ordinances, I said, but the code of ordinances just says the mayor is on, is. Elected on a four-year term, so he is looking into what needs to happen to prepare, um, something for the, the city council to consider. But I wanted you all to hear.
Well, then we'll hear back from him, we can talk about it and see about switching to three and three of four-year terms at that time.
Yeah, that's the only reason I'm bringing it up is, is that it's, it's be a better idea to balance things out. Over, over the course going forward.
This wasn't something that I brought to the table, Kurt, I just, I'm just the messenger and don't kill me every time something that you don't, you know, that you're, you're not in favor of. It was council and, and pre, and Julie actually was, when she was mayor.
Actually, this, actually, this was discussed before Julie became mayor.
Okay, then it was discussed before Julie.
The council back, well, would it be three years? Two, three years ago, before you guys got on council and, and Brian became mayor, it was discussed. But we never really took any action with it, and I think, and I think, you know, I'd kinda like to bring it up again, because now we're in the situation.
An election cycle again.
Yes, and it seems like we have two successive mayors that were appointed, and it would be nice, I agree with you. Kurt, that, you know, whoever wants to run can run, whenever the election's there. If they wanna run for mayor or run for a council seat, this has nothing to do to keep anybody from running. I mean, everybody has that opportunity, it's just this will balance out the council to where if you got. Three council members on one election, the next election will be two council members and the mayor. Instead of the mayor thrown in with three council members and then balancing the council.
Well, if you're trying to do that, you've got five council mayors, you've got six, what if you, what if you set the terms so they expire? Every two years, like, we got, we got two to twenty-five?
Why would you do that?
Well, you wanna change, you, you want, you wanna stack.
You have alternating elections.
Yeah.
One election you're electing to, right now you're electing to.
Yeah.
Which is like Cody's and Adam's position.
Yeah.
Will be at the end of twenty twenty-five.
Yeah.
Us three, Kurt, you, me, our terms end in twenty twenty-seven. What I'm saying is the mayor is also. Gonna be in twenty twenty-seven at this point, all I'm advocating is we move for when his reelection would come up. Is at the end after these guys' term. The next ones that get elected in here.
So you got three and three.
Correct.
Right.
So you're saying, you're saying you want the, you want the mayor to be on the ballot in twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-nine.
Only you go two, two.
Right?
Why would you go two, two, two?
Why go three, three, three?
No, just three and three.
Three and three.
Well, three and three, yeah.
Why, so what you're, what you're trying to say is you just want, you want the mayor to be on the ballot in twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-nine?
Yeah. Yeah, just balance it.
It just balances it, so you have three elected positions and.
I, I think we're making a mountain out of a molehill, thinking that we're gonna get four people that's gonna be all new to this, this council, and we can't get. I mean, we, we, we sit here and keep talking about this, how often have we ever had four people new in, in this council?
It's.
Yeah, whatever, I don't, I don't care what you guys do, but I'm just saying.
I mean, I, I, I think you're reading more into it than what, what it actually is.
I think you're making it more of a mountain, more of a big deal out of something that's probably never gonna happen, Mike.
How do you?
So then why do you care?
Yeah.
I don't mean, I'm just saying, why change it?
Yeah, that's, that's my, that's what I want.
Then why change it, I don't care, keep it the way it is, I don't care.
Well, I wanna hear what the lawyer says and I want him to come back.
I do too.
Okay.
I think it's, whatever, it'd be good to hear what, what he has to say and maybe we can go forward from there.
Yeah.
Don't even mention it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, well, we covered both fifteen and sixteen in that conversation. This year, what changed it most there?
Yeah, I just put that election calendar in, scheduled for FYI.
Motion to move here.
Motion to the second.
All in favor?
All right.